It's seven o'clock, so let's call to order this, the November, I don't know, seventh meeting of the Westford School Committee. Welcome, everybody. Oh, let me start us on line on Zoom. Hi, Catherine. I know Gloria yet. Soon. Okay, now we're underway on Zoom. Again, welcome, everybody. For those who are on, well, for those who are coming in on Zoom, which is nobody right now, so I'm not going to address them. All right, let's start things off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
Next up, we have our consent agenda. It's got minutes and warrants. Any questions or comments about the consent agenda?
No warrant numbers were in the packet. If somebody wants to give a little bit of text about the piano?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the last thing is.
Does that get taken off? Yeah, sorry.
It's not my version. Yep, I, yeah, I think it didn't make it in.
Sorry. We're looking at an old agenda.
Okay.
Yes, sorry, motion to, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Wow, how am I doing?
Oh, we have to do a roll call. Here we go. Ming Chen.
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye. Sean?
Aye.
Catherine? Okay. That passes six oh. I think you were muted, though, Catherine. No, it just didn't come through.
Who was the second?
Oh, I'm not hearing you.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it's showing that it's. Can you hear us?
She can hear us.
Which means that microphone is working on the owl.
And the sound is normally coming out of the owl as well, too.
Yes, correct. Oh, yeah, it's going to headphones.
Catherine, can you speak again?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. So that was an aye, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Good job on the I T there.
Uh-huh. Consent agenda passes six oh. Should have tested that before. Okay. Now we have a very special recognition. I'll hand things over to Dr. Chu.
Yes, so this evening, we have two students, two members of the senior class with us tonight, and I'd like to ask both Allison and Neharika to come forward, and we'll make sure that we have a chair for you.
Can we, can we?
All right.
Just have you all sit here for a second.
Never mind, sorry.
So we have.
Chair, it's okay.
This evening, this evening, we will be giving them the Massachusetts Association, Massachusetts Association of Superintendents Award, academic award. And this is, this is normally given to our top two academic students in the senior class. And in addition to the recognition at this moment in time, in the spring, the association hosts a luncheon that we are able to go to together, and you're able to bring some family members with you, and then all of the different students from around our region, within the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association specifically, the, they'll all be honoring two students. So it's a, it's a great event, and we'll give you all the details to, for that much later when they actually set that date. But, but so Neharika, Chala, and Allison Chen are sitting here before us, and before we actually give them the lovely certificates, I thought it might be nice to chat with them a little bit.
Were you a bridesmaid?
I did, I did warn them a little bit so that they wouldn't be, be too worried, but it's, it's always great when we have students, we have students who are with us regularly, and we always love to hear from our students who are with us regularly, but it's also great when we have students who are, are with us for, for a specific meeting. And so to hear from you, to hear about maybe some of your, the things that you've enjoyed in your time here at Westford Public Schools, it might be great. So does somebody want to throw out and ask a question? We don't all have to ask questions. We don't have to, we don't have to overwhelm you, but is there anybody who wanted to ask a question?
Is there anything you'd like to say?
Um. Thank you so much. And I've, I've really enjoyed my time at Westford Academy, and will continue to enjoy it this year. The memories, like, like with my peers and teachers and faculty, like, it's all been amazing.
Nice.
And same goes for me. I'm excited for the rest of senior year, and yeah.
That's great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just curious, a favorite subject or, or class that you've studied at W A?
Can I tack on?
Yeah.
Or a teacher? I was gonna ask that, so I think it's kind of the same thing. If there's a teacher that stands out. Not even at W A, going back, I would say, if there's a teacher.
I think for me, like, two of my favorite classes, like, I know you asked everyone, like, was A P Bio and English last year. In English class, I, like, freshman year, like, I had, like, like, it wasn't, like, the best English student, and I had, like, trouble, like, analyzing texts. And so sophomore year during COVID, I, like, tried to hone in those, like, analytical skills with the time given. And so in junior year, I had the opportunity to really, like, delve into literature. And my teacher, Mr. Mahoney, he really encouraged us to, like, discuss in classes and integrate our own, like, culture in our work. I remember there was one assignment where there was, like, the civil disobedience assignment, where we had to, like, parallel one of the Rose work with, like, a song. And I tried to integrate my own culture with it, and I was given the opportunity to do so, and that, like, just really helped me understand literature at, like, a broad level. Um, I think for me, my favorite class was definitely calculus last year with Mrs. Gartner. And, like, I wasn't exactly, like, a math person, like, before, but, and at the beginning of this class, there was definitely a steep learning curve, and it was really challenging. But I think as I got the hang of it, I really started to see how I could be more creative with math, with the problem solving and collaborating with my classmates. Because that year, too, since our class was a lot smaller, we definitely got a lot closer. So that really, it really helped create a more collaborative environment, which made my experience a lot more enjoyable. And also, at the end of the year, I got to read this sort of, like, calculus-esque book with my teacher, and that also had really helped me just enjoy math a lot more. And now, like, I feel that's always something I want to do in the future, so.
That sounds awesome. What was the book that you read?
It was called Changes the Only Constant, and it was kind of like, it kind of talked about calculus in the form of, like, historical stories for how, like, these different equations were derived, so.
Thanks.
That's amazing.
Chris is adding it to his Amazon cart.
I'm just writing it down. I love calculus. I'm gonna admit it.
Thank you for sharing the experiences and the book recommendation.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like a bonus.
Any other questions? I love the fact that you both identified subjects that you might not have, like, either felt as confident in, or you just weren't really as excited about. And that, and that's kind of what you talked about. That's, that's really exciting, too, because you've, you've clearly, you know, been committed to your studies, and you've been performing very well. And we congratulate you for all of your hard work, because we know that it's, it's a tremendous amount of work. We congratulate your families as well for the support that they've provided you. But thank you for everything that you're doing in your work right now. And yes, as you both kind of said, you still have a, a whole wonderful year to go. So it's, it's great. You'll have even more memories as you're, as you're going through. So I have a certificate for both of you. And like I said, this, this is, this is your official certificate. This is now something that you can, you know, make sure that you're able to, to share. And then there's a separate, much larger ceremony that takes place, I think it was in May. I think that's typically when they do it. But, but so we have a certificate. Oh, and I want to also thank Mr. Hardy, who is one of our teachers at the academy, who actually does a really nice job with the calligraphy to make your stuff really nice. This is, this is not a skill set that I have.
It's good to have, it's good to have that person.
And so, so every year, every year, he's been helping us out with that. Which is fantastic. So.
Personalized.
This is for you. So you see, you have a, you have a certificate here.
Thank you.
Okay. And so I present this to you. Okay, why don't you stand up? This is official. This is your certificate, as you can see.
Thank you.
So again, congratulations. We can do pictures. Here we, we'll stand together.
Yeah, take some pictures. Yeah.
Stand together, and then show your, you know, there you go.
Very nice.
So you're, you are, you are always welcome to stay. However, we also know that these meetings aren't always the most entertaining things for people to participate in. So do not, do not, if you, if you are, you know, if you decide to leave at this moment in time, you are certainly welcome to do that. But congratulations. Thank you.
We're very proud of you both.
Best of luck in your, in your year.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy it.
Thank you.
Bye.
Night.
Yeah, no, this is how these go. This is how it goes.
That was really nice.
It is nice, the idea of being able to ask impromptu speeches we ask them to make, but they did a very nice job.
With that, we will move on to public comment. If anyone here in the room has something for public comment, we'd ask that you come to the microphone and say your name and address, and then give us that comment. If anyone online on Zoom has anything, we don't have anybody on Zoom, so I, I'm thinking that's not going to happen. Folks who might be watching on YouTube, you can always watch us on YouTube. Westford Cat does a great, or on Westford Cat on their website, or on their cable channels. They do a great job. But if you want to participate in public comment during our meetings, you'd have to join us on Zoom. The link is always at the top of the agenda. And, but I will say, the audio quality is not as good on Zoom, so some people hop on for public comment and then go back over to Westford Cat for the rest of the meeting. All that said, I don't think we have anybody for public comment, sadly. So I think we can move on to informational updates, and we'll start with superintendent and assistant superintendent updates.
Sure. As a reminder to everybody, Wednesday night at seven o'clock, we're going to be hosting a Zoom webinar to talk about the priority areas, the four different priority areas for our upcoming strategic district improvement plan. We currently have 98 people registered to, to participate, so that's great, right? Yeah, I saw that. I looked that up, and I was excited to see that 98 people had already registered.
That's a lot of participation.
Right?
Yeah.
And so I am hoping that I'm going to be able to have some polls, at least one poll, if not a couple of polls, that can also take place during the Zoom as well as opening it for questions and answers. And I think you are going to help me with all the technology involved.
I was wondering, I wasn't gonna ask, but I thought maybe.
Yeah, we, we decided that it might be, for one person, it might be a little much, right?
Technical support.
Right.
Is it formatted as a webinar, or like a, so not everybody's on screen?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. So, so that's taking place on Wednesday of this week. DESI has reached out to all of the districts throughout the state and has offered to provide COVID tests for all students and staff to have for the Thanksgiving holiday, and then the return in January. So we will be receiving those and then just distributing them to all students and all staff members for them to have, if they, if they would like to have them for the return. We're not going to mandate that people use them. It's much more that people have them as a resource. And so we'll be picking those up and figuring out how we distribute them to the students.
That's great.
Before the Thanksgiving holiday. My, my visits to schools last week, so a couple of things I, I wanted to highlight, because I was able to enjoy, I went to the Miller School and Blanchard School. And one of the things that I saw, which was, it was the first time that I had seen this, when, in going to the Miller School, both Ms. Boylan and Ms. Newman, the principal and the assistant principal, they create video announcements, right? So they create a video announcement, and then they share them in a Google classroom so that the teachers can start their morning meeting on their time, as opposed to, you know, somebody coming over the loudspeaker and saying, everybody's going to start this right at this exact same time. And so the first thing that happened, which was, was quite entertaining, was Ms. Boylan and I went into a kindergarten classroom who was watching her video. And so to watch the kindergarteners enjoy the fact that they're watching Ms. Boylan while Ms. Boylan walks into the room, and they just had fun with it, right? So they were all just being silly about the idea of she's there, and then she's there, and then what's she gonna tell us? And, and it was great to kind of see that whole environment, and then the way that they conduct their morning meeting, and the way that the teacher's leading them through just even what the expectations are for the day, down to what their schedule is to, for them to experience. And it was great, and it was a lot of fun. But the reason I shared that is because then we went to a second grade class. And in the second grade class, the students were leading the morning meeting. So the teacher sat in a rocking chair and watched the students run the whole morning meeting. So every stu, well, not every student, but different students had, had specific jobs to identify what day of the week was, to identify, they were counting how many days of school. We had, at that point, it was 41 days of school. I didn't even know that we were at 41 days of school because.
You always know.
I was not counting them, right? And they always know. But just the way in which they were breaking down how they were counting it, all the different ways to get to 41, and it was, it was just awesome to go in that experience in the school within the, within, you know, what, it must have been 20 minutes of each other. The kindergarteners who were enthusiastically following the lead of their teacher through the morning meeting, to then the second graders who were totally leading the whole morning meeting. And just the differences in the way in which it was, I think, the, the way in which it was becoming, you know, more challenging in the ways that they were identifying aspects of, of, of their day. I just thought that was great, so I wanted to highlight that. And then another thing that I really enjoyed watching was, when we went to Blanchard, we went into the phys ed class. And it was fantastic to see the sixth graders come into the phys ed classroom, and they have the first couple of minutes of class to choose what they want to do. They know that there's an expectation that they're gonna, working to warm up. But whether they wanted to shoot hoops, whether they wanted to go into the, the dance revolution, we'll say is what the name of the game is, right? Whether there's a dance room, right? Or whether they wanted to be on a, a spin bike, or if they were, wanted to be punching the punching bag, or if they wanted to go into where the rowing machines were, they have that opportunity to go in there. And it was just another reminder, when we're talking about concerns that we might have about the, the downtime that students might have during the day, and just the choice. There was an expectation, they're supposed to be doing something, because they're supposed to be preparing for the class. So they, they weren't, they weren't supposed to just be sitting and not doing anything. But every single day, they have this choice to go in. And it was just great. It was really great to see that. And then, then when they all came together to prepare for what that, that specific class was gonna be, there was a, there was just a really nice focus that took place. And so I just wanted to highlight those two things, because that's not necessarily something that you're all gonna see on a regular basis. But those were the updates that I had. Did you have anything?
Yes, so we know that today, for, this week for students, it's a three-day week, because we have Veterans Day on Friday, and tomorrow, we have professional development for staff. So Magali and I have been working over the past couple of months to prepare for tomorrow. And at one point, we had a phone call into the fire station, thinking that we could potentially use one of the conference rooms at the new fire station, because we have people spread out across all of the schools, that it was, we've started to run out of space. And that really speaks to the fact that we're really trying to differentiate for each group. For example, our pre K to two teachers are focusing on equity and access for all through the science of reading. But we know not every pre K to two staff member teaches reading. So we wanted to be sure, as we always do, that everybody will find tomorrow valuable. So pre K to two, as I mentioned, that's the science of reading. We have grades three through five primarily focusing on data-focused math instruction. We have the pre K to five specialists, like the P E teachers, the art teachers, the music teachers with Magali, who is running a multi-part series over the course of the year on universal design for learning. The majority of our six through 12 staff will be focused on performance-based assessments. We're really trying to shift a lot of our assessments away from traditional paper and pencil and make it more performance-based. So we're focusing on the skills, and it's more engaging for students. It lends itself to provide students with voice and how they want to showcase whatever skill they're demonstrating and the content they're trying to show, as well as choice, because there'll be multiple means to get to whatever the outcome is. So we're excited about that. Our middle school counselors are focusing on panorama and using that data to develop some strategies to propose to administration. Our high school counselors are going out on college visits. Our E L L teachers are focusing on multilingual learner curriculum, and I could go on forever. And our TAs are, they are getting trained by our B C B As in-house. So we always try to use in-house resources whenever possible, and that's everyday strategies to support student self-regulation. So, and we have more, too, but I'm gonna stop there. So we're very excited. We will obviously collect feedback and then reflect on that as we continue to build future P D days, but we're, we're looking forward to it.
That's a lot. Thank you. So we'll go to school committee updates. And while, while you all are doing that, people will be in our schools voting. So just a reminder to folks to vote. Democracy is not a given. I think we see that worldwide and maybe closer sometimes, and so. What's that? Wait, what?
Oh, my God. I'm just teasing you, because you're, like, going on about democracy and...
Yeah, I'm, I want to promote that. I hope everybody gets out and votes at W A or Stony Brook. A reminder that, because some people, I, the spring was the first time.
Right.
We did it with the new consolidated location. So for those who maybe didn't vote in the spring, and who happen to be watching this, both of you, all the precincts are Stony Brook and at W A, so.
The Venn diagram.
Yeah, it's a small, it's a small intersection there.
Sure.
Other school committee updates. I know you have them.
Sean and I went to Robinson.
Oh, we have building walkthroughs.
We did. Are we holding, we're holding discussion on the walkthroughs, though, right?
No, we talked about it last time.
I mean, you can, we won't have a lengthy discussion, but if there's any comments, thumbs up.
I mean, is it a secret that we went?
No, 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 I didn't.
Just not a lengthy discussion.
I didn't know if we were looking for, like, themes and stuff.
It was a really great day to go to the Robinson. I had never been there. I've been, I'm trying to go to schools that I haven't been in, on my walkthroughs, because obviously my kids went through the schools, but they didn't go to Robinson. And so it was a really great experience. It's a very unique structure, and I really saw a lot of creativity and enormous amount of effort on the part of the teachers. And the kids are adorable. Like, they're just so, so, so cute. And so they had really put a lot of effort in. I think one of the folks said that they, we would get to see all of the kids, because they did a, a schedule for us so that we would make sure that we got to see all of the kids in the school. So I thought that was really awesome, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to go visit.
One of the things that jumped out at me, and Marisol and I, I think grabbed the teacher's year at the time, was we, we got, we got to speak to the full-day kindergarten teachers.
Yeah.
And the teacher who we spoke to had been a half-day teacher last year, and spoke the praises of what we've been able to do in a full day, and how much time is spent on free time, right? And how they can really delve into each subject. Like, right now, they're doing lively letters and things like that, and that they, the instructor could spend more time with, with each of those components. So it, it was nice to see something kind of come to fruition that we talk about on paper, and it was nice to see it in practice, that this is, is helping our teachers and our students every day. Another plug for we need more substitutes.
Yeah.
That was, that, that became apparent, right? It's, it's all hands on deck over there. And I, I think every school, and this is a national problem that's going on, but it's, we need substitutes.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And also, we saw the blue room as well, the seclusion room. And so it's something that we had a conversation about as well when we were there.
Great, thank you. Those walkthroughs continue with Abbott on Wednesday, and then in the following weeks, NAB Miller and another trip to W A. So we've got a couple.
When is Miller again?
It is on the 18th.
Thank you.
Yep, 10 to 12 on the 18th. And Abbott's this Wednesday, NAB is a week from Thursday. And those still have a slot. If any school committee members find that their schedule opens up and want to attend, there's still a spot for another member on each of those two.
Real, real quick, Chris, I just want to point out, that was Mrs. Burquist, who we saw over at Robinson. She was fantastic. So shout out to Mrs. Burquist.
That's great. Other updates, did any of our school committee members, I don't know, go to the Cape last, this weekend? Oh, Catherine, hey.
I don't know, does Val want to do the update on the conference?
She does not, apparently. Would like you to.
Um, yeah, I mean, we'll, I, I know myself and Valerie have said we should put our heads together and actually come up with some sort of a document or a slide deck or something. So we'll, we'll connect a little bit more on that to really share with you guys our experience down at the Cape. So last week was the joint M A S S, M A S C conference in Cape Cod. It ran from Wednesday through to Saturday, and the theme for this year was diversity, equity, inclusion. And it was a very, for me, anyway, and I think Val, you know, in some of the sessions she attended, and some we jointly attended, it was a really kind of powerful few days and thought-provoking, and I think very invigorating, seeing some of the work that's being done in other districts across the state. And I spoke with, I, I attended a session with Acton, Boxborough, and I attended another session with Beverly Public Schools. And just to see the work being done specifically, and, and the fact, obviously, Acton, Boxer being a, a neighboring town, it was amazing to see. And I think the highlight for me was probably, or one of them was Friday morning, we attended a session with a huge panel of various stakeholders from across the state, including some students, and an amazing speaker, Manuel Fernandez, who got up and spoke. He's currently the interim diversity, net, and inclusion kind of officer for Cambridge Public Schools. And it was a really powerful speech that, that morning. There was, the room was packed, and it was just really powerful and thought-provoking. So I, I was disappointed that we didn't have everybody there from Westford School Committee and Chris, too, and, and Carrie. I think everybody would have really loved to have been in that room. But there's a lot of takeaways and a lot of really interesting work that I think, hopefully, will kind of guide us as we start doing this work. I mean, the big takeaway for me was there's studies showing that to really truly embed equity within a district takes a minimum of 10 years. And knowing that we're just starting on that journey with Westford, I know it's been started kind of previously, but the, the word being intentional came up a lot about intentional equity. So I'm looking forward to the journey and more learning and what we can do along the way. But yes, it was an amazing few days in the Cape and well worth it.
Thanks, Catherine. Valerie, anything to add?
You all know I'm a note taker, so once.
Would you like to read us your notes?
Once I sort through my notes.
It's novel.
It's trying to, it, it was awesome, especially for someone who's not from an educational background. There, I could have attended, cloned myself and attended every panel. I, speaking of, I attended a science of reading panel that just was jaw-dropping. So really powerful stuff. And just the, like, at some point in my real life, I will.
powerful stuff, and just the, like, at some point in my real life, I will find a way to go through those notes and pull out sort of what's inspirational and what might be actionable or share-worthy, so, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for going, both of you.
Yeah.
My only complaint was Catherine said you attended some things together, and those better be like keynote sessions, because the rule is, the breakout sessions, you had to split and get as many as possible.
Yes, we did. We had a spreadsheet and we marked down our preferences, so that we would not overlap as much as possible.
As much as, you'd rock, paper, scissors for the really good ones.
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, it was tough to decide.
It would be good to sit down with the two of you two to talk about, because my initial understanding and impression was that a good deal of this conference was being modeled after the superintendent's conference over the summer.
Okay.
So, I think that there might be some things, even maybe some people, who we might have actually seen the same thing.
Right, yeah, some of the, definitely some of the, like, the general session, I think keynote, the introduction mentioned, oh, this was the same speaker from MASSS.
Got you.
So, yeah, I'm sure there was some overlap, yep.
Well, thanks for representing us there.
Yep, are we, I have a separate update, but I don't, was Catherine done with updates?
I just have one more thing to ask, if that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I feel like now with Alicia not here, I have to take over the annual reminder that November is CPAC Awareness Month. And so, for anybody new or to Westford or to special education, CPAC is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We have one here in Westford. It's kind of mandated legally in the eyes of the state that any town can have, can establish a CPAC, which is an advisory board to school committee and to the district, to advocate and collaborate on all things essentially diversity, equity, and inclusion regarding special education in the school district. And so, November became CPAC Month in Massachusetts. Coalition for CPAC Awareness Group actually was started by two of our own town residents, our former school committee colleague, Alicia Kurt-Malin, and the current administrative assistant in the day school, Kathy Healy-Norton, who has also been involved in CPAC over the years. And so, they are bringing more and more awareness to the work of CPAC and just how, as a community, it's a very supportive place for parents navigating, you know, times with kids who are on 504s or IEPs, or maybe they're not even there yet. You don't necessarily have to be a parent as well to be involved in CPAC. You can be a member of the community who has a background or an interest in getting involved in some of this work. So, you might notice some bridges are lit up yellow across the state. I believe it's expanding this year, so if you are wondering why a bridge is lit yellow this year in the state, it will be in remembrance of CPAC Awareness Month, because the yellow, the yellow is the color for the month.
That's great. Thank you, Catherine. And there's a really good Facebook group, too, for CPAC parents. That's extremely helpful, lots of knowledge, lots of support on there as well.
I have just a couple quick ones more.
Yeah, please.
Quick ones more. I pinch-hit for the first LPAC meeting...
Thank you.
Two weeks ago, and it was awesome, led by staff members Magalia Rodriguez-Ronan and Amy Bailey. It was a decent showing of parents. They managed the hybrid meeting logistics with grace, and it was very informative, and so it's going to be exciting to see that find its footing and get going. I brought the kiddos to the WA Student Council trunk-or-treat. That was their first, I'm sure they'll mention two, but I just wanted to say thank you for doing that, because as a parent, you buy the Halloween costume and they just never get enough uses out of it. Like, if you take the cost and divide it by the usage, so I appreciate anything that's like, great, dress it up, let's go.
Did you do the parade last Sunday?
No.
In the center of town?
No, there was, we had a conflict.
Yeah, still wait, like, until Christmas.
That's true.
Thanksgiving dinner.
Hopefully, they're not watching right now, no. And then, just a quick reminder that Finance Subcommittee will meet next Tuesday. And then, another plug for this Thursday, the Day School PTO is hosting an Indian Cultural Heritage event from 6:00 to 8:00 with a cultural potluck, music and dance performances, crafts and stories. This is a free event. Everyone is welcome to attend, not just day school families. They have information on their Facebook page, which is also embedded on their school homepage, so you can head there if you need more information. They're looking for potluck dinner submissions, help with craft stations if you're interested in helping, or just to show up and enjoy, so...
Can you say the day and time one more time?
Sorry, Thursday, this Thursday, whatever date that is, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
That'd be the 10th. Thursday's the 10th.
Thank you. Thursday, the 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. I'll be there with the kids, hope to see some of you there.
That's great.
That's it. Sorry.
Are you transitioning us to the student updates?
Well, I'll build a bridge.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Okay, Gloria.
Okay. First update is policy. Catherine and I met for Policy Subcommittee and reworked the policy we've discussed previously on public virtual school students participating in Westford Public Schools extracurriculars. We've forwarded a new draft to leadership. That draft, just since there was some public comment on it, I'll clarify, it does not change any of our procedures for homeschool students. That is, that remains as it has always been, and that policy is left alone. This would focus only on public virtual school students, and we've worked in allowances for whatever may end up happening with the MIAA or other governing bodies that could impact our activities, but that's in process, and it's with leadership, and it will eventually circle back to all of you.
Thank you.
The other update is our Student Advisory Committee. We kind of reestablished that group last year and have had some preliminary meetings. Chris and I have met with the students. These are five students, freshmen, sophomore, junior, and two seniors who will be meeting together and are an advisory body for our committee. So, that group's going to be meeting on alternate Fridays. As I said, Chris and I have been meeting with them so far, but I will send out the upcoming dates to all of you, and if one of you would like to join us for those meetings, let us know if you're available on a Friday afternoon. And that group, last Friday, elected their chair, and I will let Varun introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Varun Koshik. I was here last week as well, if you guys were here, and I can get into some of our updates as well. So, today at WA, there is Darba, which is an Indian celebration, and it goes until 9:30, and there's a DJ, and there's food, and yeah. Also, for seniors, the college application deadline, the early action deadline just passed, November 1st, and that was good, because a lot of stress is finally relieved, and now we're moving on and we can kind of more gear-focused towards our schoolwork. And then, we also had two ALIS safety drills over the last month, and...
Yeah, some other stuff that has been happening, we just had, I think, in these past couple weeks, we've had Spirit Week, we've had the Spirit Rally, we had a very successful trunk-or-treat, as Valerie mentioned. It was, it was a huge turnout, which I don't think we were expecting, because so many cars ran out of candy.
Oh, my gosh.
Like, I just didn't think that that many people were going to be there, so that's really exciting, so hopefully we can expand that next year for more kids in the town and stuff like that. Next week, Student Council is actually, as you guys were talking about, this conference that the two of you went to, it reminded me that Student Council is going for a leadership conference next week, where we will, we typically discuss, we have speakers that discuss DEI, how to be a better leader, how to be a voice of reason, all of those types of stuff, so it'll be interesting for me to go and then report back, you know, what we, what skills we've learned and what our speakers were like, so I just thought that was something to mention, but...
Where's that?
So, this one is, I believe, it's just like a day field trip to, I think it's, I forget which high school, if I'm being honest. Yeah, I don't remember which high school, but it's some, it's some high school, I think in Central Mass.
And it's a day trip, is what it's...
Yeah, it's a day trip. Actually, it's probably in Northeastern Mass somewhere, because this one is just the NIMAS Conference, which is like Northeastern, but there is an inside, there is a conference for the entirety of Massachusetts that will happen in February around, so, yeah.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
I've always, I didn't grow up in a time when I had to have an ALIS drill, but it is my understanding that it can be a very stressful experience. And so, you don't have to answer this question now, but I mean, I would love to hear from you at some point if you had any thoughts about how we could deal with the stress of the ALIS drills, and if there's a way that we can process that in a way that's, that's healthy, because I think we do the ALIS drills for the physical health of children, and then I think that there are some feelings that kids can experience during that, that I'm not sure that we do as well as we could.
Yeah, I definitely think that's something we could address. I will say, in high school, I feel that unfortunately, because it's become normalized almost, for us, it's, oh, we just have a drill. But I believe that there is probably a side of, first of all, students have fears that they're not willing to, that there's definitely that component, and, but I feel probably the fear is more rampant among like the middle school population or even the lower end of the high school population. But it's interesting that you mentioned that. We can definitely discuss that in depth later, but I don't know whether Varun wants to weigh on this, but I feel like almost for us, it's like, oh, let's take 10 minutes out of our class to go outside and then come back in, which is almost...
I think one of the, a simple, a problem with it has become that it's become super-normalized, that like you have it twice a year, that people aren't really kind of focusing on the more intricate learning aspects of it. So, like in each of the classrooms during the drills, there's a presentation on the TVs, but like half the kids, they're like on their phones, or they're like playing games with their friends. So, like people have become so accustomed to these drills that they're no longer focusing on like what it actually brings to school, and like that they should be paying attention to it and like learning from it.
Which I don't know what's, obviously, there is some healthy compromise, but my point is, I don't know, maybe it's a good thing that they're not as focused on the gravity of what we're having to do, but at the same time, obviously, we don't want situations like that. I remember like a couple years ago, it used to be like a huge thing, like everyone's going to have fun, everyone gets to barricade. So, it was, it's a little interesting, actually, when you think about what the feelings are around this, because actually, it was like a fun thing to barricade the room, for everyone to pick up stuff. It's just interesting that you brought that up, so...
I also think that there, it has shifted a little bit in our district, right? So, even when we think about the years where we've been interrupted, and then when we came back, we started, we started changing the conversation around, because I think there was kind of a concern, and like my thing has been, we don't need to practice panic, right? Like, that doesn't really help us pre-K to 12, so that's something we've kind of all talked about as a leadership team. So, I do think that the drills have, they've, I think they've changed a little bit, and I think you can attest to that, because you've gone through the whole system now, so the idea of how it might be a little bit different now. But it's, I think it's an important thing for us to continue to talk about.
I think it's, I think there's probably some feelings that, like, one of the students said, like, the kids are not necessarily willing to talk about in presence, and I think even being on your phone is a coping, too, like, I don't want to think about this right now, this isn't, so, you know, as much as it can feel like people aren't paying attention, it could be a way to cope with something that's really stressful and scary. So, anyway, thank you so much for entertaining my question.
That is all we have.
Those are your updates.
I was just going to tag on, because Varun, if you even remind everybody again that Darba is taking place right now.
Yeah, it's taking place right now.
And this is recorded, so if anybody's watching on YouTube, they could go to WA and participate in this great event and then watch this recording.
And we won't even know, you're on YouTube.
We won't know, because you're on YouTube. We don't even know, because you're not logged into Zoom anymore.
Feeling's not hurt.
So, I just wanted to say that, because he brought up a good point. It's literally happening right now.
Yeah. And likewise, you folks can leave if that was something you were planning on going to.
If you were going to attend, that's...
Again, we will not be offended.
And I guess if you're watching the recording of this, know that it's not...
Don't go. Don't go. It says live when it's live. It does say live on YouTube. Don't go to, don't go.
It could be problematic, people stopping, recording. Can I get over there?
Well, that's our lead-in to our first item of business, which is our FY22 MCAS results.
Oh, great.
I don't know if that's a good lead-in, too.
It's not, it's not. I didn't think it was a good lead-in, I said it's a lead-in. I never said it was a good lead-in, no. Shifting gears.
Thank you. Well, I, can I just summarize? I picked up some things from the conversation. When Dr. Chu was talking about the PE class where the kids walk in, they have a do-now, and they have choice, that increases engagement, and that's what UDL is about, is giving that choice, there's no downtime, it's instructional time used very intentionally, so I would love to see that class when I'm visiting schools again. And a friendly competition next year, maybe the class that, the class that brings in the most Halloween candy gets something so that you don't run out of candy.
Oh, my God. We'll think about it.
That's a healthy competition.
We'll think about it.
So, thank you. Chris, if you don't mind putting the slideshow up there. There you go.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I, I put this together with a lot of input from my colleagues from the cabinet, including Dr. Clary, Dr. Chu, and also I was able to present it to the leaders, our principals, on Friday, which was a good walkthrough for me, and I received some really good constructive feedback. So, this is a culmination of a lot of thinking. So, the next slide, why do we do district and state testing, especially the MCAS, is we want to have accountability for how we measure the end-of-year standards. The standards, the frameworks provides a nice coherent structure to the curriculum, and it's a way to connect that curriculum to accountability, achievement, and performance of students. We use it to look at not only challenges, but what are the strengths of our curriculum, and then how can we intervene that's intentional and really laser-focused? The accountability part is sharing out that information with our families and our community and stakeholders, and it's a way to make it transparent, to connect what's happening in the classroom to the student's achievement. The assistance is that the state, DUCY, looks at the MCAS scores, and it is a way for them to diagnose and also determine what measures they can take to support a district that needs assistance. Fortunately, here in Westford, it's not something that you've experienced. I, from a prior district that I was in, I've experienced it, it's quite intrusive, although the lessons learned were tremendous. So, the next one, the next slide is, this is the Accountability System Indicators, so district's accountability percentage score is determined by these indicators. Achievement in the major content areas that are tested, student growth percentile, high school completion, progress towards English proficiency, so our access scores get put in there, chronic absenteeism, or we would like to be who's present, most of our kids are present, and advanced coursework completion, which is going to like the AP forces. And so, those all have weights and a numerical input into our accountability numbers or score. And you can see down below that there's that continuum where it says like not requiring assistance or intervention, and then the other side where the state is saying you need intervention, and it's nice that Westford has not experienced that. So, next slide. So, this has been hot in the news, it's been in the New York Times, the NAAT test, the National Test that they do on math and English for all fourth graders and eighth graders in the United States. It's actually a nice sample. It's a random sample, so they can't like stack the deck. I think sometimes Westford is included. I believe Westford may have been included um, because the Stony Brook had some, some NAEP tests last year. But this is, this is reflective of the trends that are happening across the country. Our fourth grade students are thirty-four percent, or excuse me, thirty-six percent or above um, or proficient. And that's like less, you know, a little bit more than a third. Um, and the reading, we also are low at thirty-three percent. Also, I'm saying the nation, not Westford Public, just to be clear. But what is also um, interesting that the math scores really uh, took a dive as well eh, eh, across this, the country. Massachusetts fortunately receives the highest scores of any state. Uh, we've always been at the top of our game with uh, public education and we have the second highest scores on the other two assessments. Um, and we continue to rank first in the nation overall. Um, but there was a slight decline in twenty nineteen.
McGauley, if I can just add quickly.
Of course.
Just for clarification, if you aren't aware, the NAEP, it is, it is a random sampling. And when we say that a school participates, it's a very small sampling from the school as well too. So when the eighth graders take that test, it might be thirty to forty students in that class. The, 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 they, the school gives a list of the student population to the assessors. They then randomly select students and then you then meet with them and they talk about whether or not, I mean, and then if parents don't want them to participate, they have to have permission to do that. But it's, I mean, it is, it's, it's really random and it's not everybody. Sorry.
Yes, and, and actually, they took the initiative to do it this year so that we could measure the impact of COVID because usually I believe it's every eight years. So they squeezed this one in um, as a good dipstick.
Sorry, you keep saying NAEP. What is that?
It's the National Assessment of Educational Progress.
Progress, okay. Yeah.
Couldn't remember his proficiency.
Thank you. Um, in the PowerPoint that I gave you, it's actually listed in the notes um, with a link. So you'll see that there. But yes, that's, uh, I think I remember taking it when I was in fourth grade. A long time ago. Next slide. So this is just representing the NAEP scores. Uh, again, um, we may have included Westford here. I know for the eighth grade they were. Um, reading, it was the largest drop since nineteen ninety. And, and the first drop ever in math scores across the nation. So we can certainly see the impacts of, of remote learning, virtual learning.
And the trauma of the pandemic. Like I don't think it's just lack of instruction, I think.
Right, right, right.
So when we get to accountability, remember all those indicators, those all have a value and then that value is used to determine our accountability percentile. And what I have here is I have highlighted, we are um, in the eighty-six or above percentile for our schools that are tested on MCAS. So remember, this isn't all our schools. These are just the tests, the schools that uh, have MCAS starting in grade three. And Westford Academy performs better than ninety-nine percent of all other high schools in Massachusetts. So congratulations to that. Um, it is also kudos to the primary and middle school grade teachers that have added to this compounding of knowledge and skills at Westford Academy. We don't have uh, twenty twenty scores here because we didn't administer MCAS that year and then we were held harmless the following years. There was no accountability score. So this is the accountability percentile by year and this is by school and I, and we chose to put it this way and represent so that you can see that we're all over seventy, seventy-five percentile points, uh, which is excellent. And it's going from eighteen to nineteen, of course, twenty and twenty-one. We, we, we were not held to account by the state. We were given a free pass. Um, and everyone was able to breathe easy then.
And I think this is important just to remind ourselves and others that clearly based on this data, you know, w- we are not alone with, with COVID and with the interruptions that we've had in school. And I think that a lot of parents understandably, and even some, some of our probably older students thought because of any hours missed that they would be behind. But we kept trying to keep things in perspective to say the, the world has shifted. So when you're looking at this information to see that we continue to outperform many other in, Westford Academy, you can't be the hundredth percentile, right? So that's, that's the highest one. Um, schools that also test is just so promising to the programming we've had, the commitment from students and parents and the relentless work that our staff members put into keeping things going despite the many horrific obstacles.
Uh, it's evident that the rigor was still there.
And then, and then this is the relative percentile, right? So which means like um, some, some of the other school district, they may actually drop more than Westford.
Right.
Right?
So next slide, Chris, please. So the white and the Y of student growth percentile. Uh, this was actually illuminating in two thousand nine when they started this um, pilot. I was part of it and it was finally like, oh, we can see that kids who are not starting at the same achievement level can now be compared to similar peers with the same prior achievement level. And, and that's interesting because the first time you get a SGP or student growth percentile is in fourth grade if they took the MCAS in third grade. Um, and so it's combining the perfor- like it's, excuse me, combining achievement um, and their growth to give, give an overall assessment of their performance. So I just wanted to put those up there. I'm not sure if that was something that you, you've talked about before. And it also highlights the, the high achieving students in schools that are striving beyond the proficiency. And I'll get to more detail on that. Um, and it recognizes evidence of progress among the students even with low achievement. So you can get a low MCAS score one year, but then the following year you can, your growth percentile can be very high and you made some growth eh, in your achievement. Uh, I'll show you the next slides to highlight those nuances. So we use the SGP. These are some key ideas to uh, to not only identify challenges, but identify the strengths that students' performance beyond a traditional achievement test. Um, it helps uh, the state, the district and even our, our, our district, excuse me, our school department to make really targeted um, decisions. SGP is also a nice way to evaluate curriculum. So I, I believe for, you know, the implementation of the science of reading, I know it's new, but in, in, in four or five years, we're gonna see and be able to assess using our MCAS scores as just a dipstick to say, oh, this, this was effective, this was working. And we use the word typical or um, here they use it in the language. It's neither high growth nor low growth, but growth that was somewhere in the middle of the distribution. And I'll show you that. It's, it's between forty and sixty percentile points. So some key points for uh, SGP is that each student's rate of change is compared to their peers, like I said earlier. The rate of change is expressed as a percentile. Growth is not achievement. Um, a student can have low achievement and high growth. A kid can have um, high achievement and very low growth. And that's interesting, that, that's an interesting dynamic because we can have high achieving kids not progressing. They're not making a lot of growth. Um, and that's something that we need to also consider. And we'll get it, and SGP is ju- subject to change for each year because the cohort, the cohort that takes the MCAS the, the prior year is compared to their peers the next year. Next slide. So here's the average student growth percentile by grade span and year. And, and, and again, the low growth is between one and thirty-nine percentile points. Typical growth is forty to fifty-nine and high growth is sixty to sixty-nine, excuse me, sixty to ninety-nine. And you can see non-high school is gonna be your three to eights. Um, and high school, we know, we only have one. But we're all above the typical growth. Um, and so you see the years and colors there. Uh, twenty twenty-one, yeah, non-high school, there was a bit of a dip. Um, but that's to be expected at that time after COVID and now, and then we went up to fifty-five point two. So that was a, that was a good, good jump there. And that is kudos to the teachers' hard work with remote learning. Next slide. So this, this data here is not, is not Westford. This is an example. Um, I just wanted to show you the scatter plot for the SGP, which is interesting because then you see the four quadrants there. And you can see that a kid that has um, can be low achieving, low growth. A child could have uh, low achieving, high growth in the bottom right quadrant. And then at the top right quadrant, it's high achievement, high growth. And then at the left top, it's high achieving, low growth. So i- it's important to drill down at the school level and then at the grade level to see who those students are. Um, and then you can see the distribution, the example of distribution, they use very low, low, moderate, high and very high. But again, so this is our, this is a scatter plot of our twenty twenty-two English Language Arts Grade Ten. It is just to show you that we can drill down in Edwin Analytics very, to very specific subgroups. You can see low income and non-low income. Their, their, their mean SGP is, is that? It, they're not that far off. So you can see that there's, you know, there's a, there's a kid over in the bottom right quadrant. I'd be curious to know in a data team, who those kids are.
But the low income kids are, their mean SGP is lower than the, than that of all students.
Yes.
Okay.
The low, a low income is fifty-nine percent SGP and the non-low income. When you look at it also too as uh, white, non-white, they're pretty similar.
I don't, I don't understand the relevancy of what you just said.
Low income and non-low income are two subgroups. If I switched it to white, non-white, the, it, the scatter plot would be pretty similar as well.
So you're saying that the mean SGP is also, there's um, racial and ethnic implications to that?
On the low income or the white, non-white?
I'm, I'm asking about the mean SGP and you're saying that.
So the low income is, they're at fifty-nine, so they're still within the moderate uh, student growth, which is the range of forty to sixty. So we're still servicing them pretty well. Um, and the non-low income um, is sixty-five, which is still actually within the high growth.
I don't think your example, I guess, I, I think I can understand why you're confused. Your example was just saying that when we look at all the various subgroups, there's not a large discrepancy.
Yes, thank you.
She wasn't comparing the white and non-white to this. She was just saying what we found was that none of our subgroups were outside of the typical range of growth. And so when she used that example, then you were like, wait a second, are you saying that you're comparing? And she wasn't comparing them. I think she was just saying like when we looked at all the different subgroups.
They're within that forty to sixty or sixty above SGP, so we're still.
So the difference between fifty-nine and sixty-five is not as significant.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was gonna ask.
So we're servicing their, the groups well.
I mean, I think, I mean, I don't know that, I mean, this is a data analytics question of how significant is that? Is that sample size, you know, how, how does that sample size play into the significance of that number? I, I don't, I don't.
We won't get an SGP if the subgroup is less than twenty. Cause that's not significant.
So it is, so yeah.
Yeah. So anything above, it's enough significance of a group to define the SGP. Yes, good question.
And, and the idea is that we're looking at it as to where those numbers fall within what the expectation is. So the fact that fifty-nine is literally just, just next to sixty, which is the high growth.
Yeah.
Sixty and above is high growth. So fif- the, the idea being is that we're, we're in the typical expectation of growth when they're compared to their peers. And some of our students are in the high growth. We don't have a significant number of students who are in the low growth category. But we, we do have some and we'll look at those individuals, but as the collective, I think, I, I, that's the way that I was reading.
Yes, that's the, you, you said it more eloquently than I did.
So if you're looking to um, that piece, right, there is like one, two, three, four, five, five students below twenty percent, right? And then you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, over sixty percent. So, so we have a lot of, we have, we have like forty per- forty percent of the kids
Right.
in that low income category, actually in high growth.
Right. So for me, when I'm looking at this, my concern would be not this distribution, but the fact that we don't have more of the gray up here.
The achievement, that's the achievement.
Right, but we're just talking about growth.
Okay.
So we're looking at the, we're looking at it this way, not that way. But that would be a concern is that we'd look up here and say that why, why do we not have any gray?
Yeah, we don't have high achievement, but we have the, the growth, the SGP part is fine. But the high achievement part is like, is lacking.
Right.
I will say too, of course, when you see high growth, that feels better than um, typical growth. However, it would not be developmentally appropriate to measure our student success on did they get high growth. Typical growth is what you would expect and it means your, your students are spot on. High growth is bragging rights. That is not what we expect to get students to because it would not be fair to the students for that, to, to, for us to have that expectation on them because of the way it's distributed.
And the high growth can, can mean a number of things. It can mean, it can be a change from, I mean, I, I, I remember talking with one student who didn't care about the test one year and then did actually try the next year. And so it reflected like this incredible growth because they basically just didn't, didn't really participate. And that's not a true, that, that's not a true um, measurement of their, of their growth, if that makes any sense, right?
I think my concern, I, I, if, if we hadn't had this, all this discussion, I mean, I think my concern is that what we're seeing is that the low income kids are in the typical growth mean SGP and the non-low income kids are in the um, above average. And so I think what we're seeing is like actual data about inequities in our, in our um, city. And I think it's in our town and I think it's okay to like take a second and acknowledge that. And I think that um, discussing it in a lot of different ways and saying a lot of different things about it doesn't change the fact that like we have committed, we're committed to diversity, equity, inclusion. And like we're seeing data that some of our kids have more opportunity in our town than others. And I think that that's okay to talk about.
Oh, I agree. I agree one hundred percent. I don't think anybody would, I don't think anybody would disagree with that. And that's actually something that McGauley specifically has been, has been talking about a great deal. I think for me, the big if, issue for us, especially coming right after all of the news about how bad the United States has just done educationally. I think it's important when we look at our data to say, uh, that's not accurate. And so we're looking at it as a trend saying, hey, what we're doing, we're continuing, we're continuing to move in a similar path as to how we have been. I agree with you one hundred percent and that's the. I agree with you one hundred percent, and that's the way that we dive in when we're looking more specifically at the data. I think McGauley's kind of point tonight is to kind of show that
The macro view.
We've, Westford has actually done fairly well where we were hearing all of these stories.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
Right. But I agree, but that's, but your point is excellent. And like, those are things that we do need to look at as we're unpacking it, I think, more specifically.
And I mean, if it's between forty and fifty-nine typical growth, I think that's, we owe that to our students. It's, it's owing them a year's growth in their education, no matter where they start. So we, uh, we also have some good signs here of our SGP in the subgroups. Again, if there was a subgroup that was less than twenty, it's not significant. So you'll see the subgroups there for this class of twenty-twenty-two for ELA, grades three through eight. Everyone is above forty, uh, within the typical growth. And then the high school, you have some high growth and some close to high growth with the fifty-nine. But again, there's no red.
Which is actually unusual. Typically, there's one or two spots where you have to say, whoa, what's going on? And so this may be the first time, if it's not the first, it's been very few times in my nine years where there's no red at all. Generally speaking, we usually do well, but we tend to find pockets where there's low growth that we have to dive deep, more deeply.
Yes, and, and, and having, having students with disabilities and low income be above forty is really good in an urban setting where my prior district, that was a very, we, we, we would be happy with this. So we would be celebrating. But the SGP, it really highlights where these subgroups start and where they end up. And I think that is an accurate picture of their progress within that, that year from one MCAS to the next. So the next one is student growth percentile, ELA. These are the subgroups. Again, it's just a visual of what you saw in the data table. But again, it's very encouraging and, and the hard work that's been done here should be celebrated. And then we have the same for math. Again, math took the biggest dive in a long time. And I have to say that, uh, Westford managed to get through the pandemic. We have a lot of typical growth here and some high growth, and no one's in the red. So this is just again, that visual representation of that data table. So here's where we get to achievement. So the MCAS achievement levels, first, the MCAS two-point-oh achievement levels, they changed. There was a switch. When we, when we switched to the Common Core, uh, the Common Core standards were more rigorous. MCAS two-point-oh had to match the Common Core standards. And with that, the achievement range has increased. You can see in the prior MCAS, they used Advanced Proficient Needs Improvement Warning. And then in, you know, in their ranges for the scaled score was, was less. Now we have the achievement score in MCAS two-point-oh, and we have, um, meeting expectations, exceeding expectations. And so if we're comparing old MCAS to now, there, it's apples and oranges. Because the curriculum is a lot more rigorous now that Massachusetts has incorporated the Common Core. Yes.
I just had a quick question as to maybe you have an answer as to why the male and like female sort of data is taken? Because when I look at this, right, like, I understand if maybe the student with disability, that growth percentile is low, then you can help those specific students, low-income students, you could focus on those students, like. But if the male and female, like, person, growth percentages were low? Like, I, I guess I'm wondering what is really the point of gathering that data?
That's interesting. I, I think the historical answer I have for you is that prior, like, the math STEM classes were, were male dominant.
I see.
And so, um, there was a time in the nineties and the early two thousands where the emphasis was on really supporting females in the math and STEM classes. So I think there may have been an overcompensation for being intentional about making sure you include the females that, that I think we kind of forgot about the males. But that's, that's the historical answer that I have for that.
I see.
So it also goes back to equity. Who's answering more in the, in the class? Who's dominating the discussion in the class? And so the, the, you know, the instructors need to balance that. Those are the types of things we think about when we look at those types of subcategories.
And those are, and also, that's the, that's the information that the state is collecting.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the other pieces to.
We don't have a choice.
Right, right.
Right, we, we didn't specifically set out to say, oh, let's look at that. That's just the way that, which that they're separating that as well too and sharing that information.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. I think it, it just in my head, I was like, well, how, well, they wouldn't help the males specifically, the females, I understand.
Yeah. Good question. So then we have the achievement percentiles for, uh, Westford Academy for ELA Math. And then we have our, our grades three through eight. And again, uh, we're, they're all high. I mean, the I think this is remarkable, considering what everyone has been through. And to be able to maintain, sustain, or even surpass expectations, I think, is a tribute to the collaboration and the work that's been done in this district. From an outsider coming in, I, I was pleasantly surprised. Next slide. So this is just again, a visual, um, of the data that you saw on the data table. And then we have our distribution by year. I just wanted to show you the, how we've maintained over the years. And then compared to the state. I, I apologize if the bar graph's a little wonky, because I couldn't get the state up there. But you do have the table. So exceeding and, exceeding expectations and meeting expectations. In twenty-nineteen, we surpassed the state. They were at fifty-two percent. And then partially meeting twenty-three percent. But if you go to twenty-twenty-one, of course, twenty-twenty, we didn't have MCAS. They survived that year. We went to twenty-twenty-one. We administered the MCAS, but again, districts were held harmless for accountability. And yet, we still managed to sustain seventy-three percent of our kids, almost a mirror image of twenty-nineteen. And so that's something again to recognize and to celebrate. And then twenty-twenty-two, we were at, we're still within that range. Next one, please. This one, I caught the state on. But you can see the math grades three through eight, um, the comparisons between the state and the district. And you can see that we are above the state in all categories or below, because we want to be lower than the state when it comes to not meeting. It's counterintuitive, but, um, it's something to celebrate as well. And it's, it's pretty remarkable that throughout those years, we've still maintained some really good achievement scores.
Boy, that state, that state number from nineteen to twenty-one, that's dramatic.
Yeah.
From forty-nine down to three.
Yeah, he jumped, yeah, he jumped enough.
That's crazy.
Yeah, that is. And then we have here the ELA achievement level, district, state comparisons for grades three through eight. Again, exceeding and meeting, uh, Western Public Schools is above the state in the achievement categories. So again, it's, in the total number of kids, we had two thousand one hundred and eighty tested. And then this is, uh, grade ten ELA. Again, um, over the history of, uh, past three years, we have district in twenty-nineteen was at eighty-three percent. In twenty-twenty-one, we managed to go up to eighty-nine percent. And then in twenty-twenty-two, so for me, that's, that's sustaining, that's keeping that momentum. Now that we're back in school, twenty-twenty-three, I expect to see some higher numbers in all categories or lower in the not meeting. Because we're gonna push them into the, partially or the meeting. Which slide am I on, the right slide? What slide number is that?
Twenty-four, I believe.
Okay, I'm a little behind on my notes. Okay, got it, got it. So again, this is the, um, the ELA, this is last spring's scores for just grade ten ELA. And, uh, the dark bar is the, the dark blue one, or the lighter blue one is the number of students. Then you have the district in comparison to the state. And we, the district is at eighty-four percent exceeding or meeting tenth grade ELA. I mean, that's just phenomenal. I, I haven't seen those scores. That is, it's remarkable. And, and again, that's a tribute to the hard work and the cohesive and vertical alignment of the curriculum here. Because I've never seen that, but it's remarkable. Keep doing what you're doing and more. And then we have the math scores, similar. We're at eighty percent of our kids are exceeding or meeting. So, do you have a question?
Question, yeah. So why are there three hundred eighty kids in the ELA and three hundred eighty-four in the math section?
Three hundred eighty-four, three hundred eighty in the ELA.
It could, it could vary based on students who are absent or, yeah.
Number tested.
Or even if a student, if a student joined or left us in between those two.
Yes.
Test, just take one.
Good question.
Yeah, it's usually a couple of weeks between.
I don't know how you got that.
And then we have grade five, science and technology. Again, we have the next generation science standards as well that raise the rigor again on our, on our learners. And we have some pretty, pretty nice results in a sense of meeting expectations. That is fifty-two percent. So really, it is sixty-nine percent of exceeding and meeting, um, which is also remarkable compared to the state. Whatever we're doing, I'm going to watch when I go into those classrooms. We're, we need to keep doing what we're doing, because those are remarkable scores as well. And then this is, this is the same for tenth grade, but then you have the two, you have, um, you have the science and technology, which were the private, like, the legacy, the old standards, and then the far-right science, technology, next-generation standards. And you can see that there's a, a bit of a shift between those two, because the next-generation standards are a lot more vigorous. And I think as people get comfortable with that curriculum and understanding that curriculum deeper, then we'll see it reflected in the kids' achievement. And then, and that's another breakdown of the, of the, um, legacy versus the next generation. Because the legacy still was using the old MCAS and the old science standards, which had the different proficiency ratings. But we're at eighty-six percent of our, our tenth graders are, are doing phenomenal in the science, technology, or STEM. And that pretty much concludes it. So I, I thank you for the questions, but if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Thank you.
Yes, Gloria.
So what, what has, has changed in those STEM standards for the, the next-generation version? Like, what, what is the, is, is there an overarching change? Or are there just incremental changes within pockets? Or is, is, or we see some, something, a dramatic change, focus change?
Well, I definitely think like the process standards, like the engineering standards, like, that's a bigger emphasis in the next generation. And I'm sorry, you were gonna say something.
No, no.
Okay. So it, it's, it's more of that hands-on. And similar to the, to the other curriculums, um, the process standards or the math practices, like, that's where the problem solving and the higher-order thinking comes into play. So it's not a lot of rote of like memorizing biology terms or memorizing the parts of a plant. It's more about thinking like a scientist. And I think that's a huge shift for the way that our elementary teachers teach, our middle school teachers teach when they, in preparation for the high school labs.
And, and the, the state standards shifted to the national standards, right? So that was part of this as well too, right? That was the whole idea, was that it?
Like the Common Core, yeah. But it is more on like that sci, like the scientific inquiry process.
Catherine, did you have a question?
Hi, Dave. And so, McGauley, sorry I'm not there in person tonight. And first of all, thank you for this presentation. It was extremely well planned and thought out, and I loved all the charts.
Thank you.
And, and the data. So, um, thank you for spending a lot of time. And yes, I can totally see that the overall message is really good and positive. And so I, I, I really, um, want to say well done to every teacher in Westford. And, and their blood, sweat, and tears over the last few years. I, I do think that, you know, we can see all the hard work coming through. There was one thing, McGauley, that stood out, and I, I just would be curious as to your, um, thoughts on it. And now it's something really small, but it's something that I kind of just picked up on. Is that in the charts, the Edwin Analytics, the district achievement distribution by year, ELA and the math for grades three to eight. What I did notice was that for our kids not meeting expectations, we've actually seen an increase in that year on year. And
Which slide are you on?
It's from me. I'm like, do you see the ones I'm talking about, McGauley?
Can you, uh, you're, you're cutting in and out, Catherine, can you tell us again?
She's on slide twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, um,
Okay.
The district achievement distribution by year, the English Language Arts grades three to eight. I don't have numbers on the slides.
It's, it's slide twenty. We found it.
I found it, thank you, sweetie.
We, we found it, Catherine, thank you.
Thank you. Our student reps got me right.
There's that one and the next one, which, um, so one talks about ELA, exactly. Thank you, Chris. One talks about ELA and one talks about math. And the one I kind of, I kind of get drawn to is a little bit both on the partially meeting and the not meeting. And for the, for not meeting though, it's the one in ELA, there seems to have been a steady, like, there's a percentage increase every year in our students not meeting expectations. And, and in math, we went from two percent in twenty-nineteen to five percent in twenty-one and five percent in twenty-two. And so my thoughts are kind of initially drawn to those numbers, because I'm like, who are those students? And what is it that we can do for those students? Because clearly, we're, we're, we're going the wrong way on the graph with ELA in particular. I mean, math seems to have held firm this year, but the fact we've, we've gone up year on year on not meeting expectations for the three to eight grades.
And that, and that's a great noticing on the English Language Arts, where there's the three percent, four percent, five percent.
Yeah.
A one percent increase is, is for, for me, not very significant in that sense. But yes, I do see if you combine them, that the percentages would be higher if we grouped partially in not meaning. For, and again, it's, it's reflected in NAEP too, that reading went down. So that might also be a piece of that. The other thing with the math is math took the biggest dip in NAEP. So there may be a correlation between, um, math was, was hit a little So there may be a correlation between, um, math was, was hit a little harder than reading during COVID. Um, it's a great noticing, um, for not meeting, we're at five percent, um, in twenty twenty-two and then five percent in twenty. So that's, that stayed static. But yes, at the school level, when the data teams are working, that's where they zero into the micro level. That's when they're getting to the student level. And, um, it's important to do that work so that we can look at who's not meeting. And if they're not meeting expectations or partially, what is their SGP? Are they still making progress based on the curriculum that we're designing for them? But yeah, that nitty gritty comes down to the school level when they're looking at their students' data.
And they're combining it with the iReady data.
Yeah, yeah, they triangulate it.
Which is also really helpful, but this is now becomes one data point that they say, okay, wait, let's look at this. And now let's compare it to the, to the, the different benchmarks that we have in real time.
Yeah.
Yes, which is important.
Now, I appreciate that answer because after Catherine's question, my follow-on was, what do you do then, right? What do we do with this data? And so you kind of dipped into that a little bit of how this then gets used, right? It's not just for us to look at and talk about here. It's to actually look at individual students or schools or whatever it may be.
And one example of SGP that they gave was that SGP can, can, can highlight transitions between years. So a district used that to decide like, oh, we have too many transitions. And once they change to a more static of like a K to five or that, it was just an example from DSE. Um, that, that's a one way to use the SGP. Um, when you get down to the student level, yes, we're looking at the standards, we're looking at the item analysis, we're looking at, uh, you know, what stumped the kids? Uh, did, do we even cover this in the curriculum? And that's where you get the cohesiveness back to the curriculum. Is our curriculum focused? Is it clear? Is it rigorous? And is it cohesive? Not just horizontally in a grade level, but vertically. Um, and that's the work that gets down to the ground level. Sitting, sitting with the.
I think it would be one of the things though, that could be really interesting when, and, and this is more, you know, for your office, Magali, and, and the district to look at. But I think what would, could be very interesting is to take those very micro-level numbers we're looking at and see, okay, of these students, were any of these students involved in any of the like COVID intervention programs we ran or the, the summer? Because I think there's, there's lessons potentially to be learned or not learned, one way or the other. You know, to see what worked and what didn't work. Because I think it would inform us as a district in a really positive way moving forward to know, how do we help these kids for future?
And that's a, that's a, that's a great example of how this type of macro data is used to drive the, the district. But yes, I, I agree that, that getting to that student level is where the rubber hits the road.
Any.
Thanks, Magali.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Catherine. Any last questions for Magali? Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. It was a pleasure.
All of that data. It's good to see it. I know we always anticipate it coming. We know it comes out and then we wait for it to get crunched and, and put in graph form. So.
And this is, this is, uh, you know, I share this with the coordinators and they, they go to the deeper level.
Yep.
They're getting to the standard and the item analysis. So those discussions are happening in department levels and grade levels too.
Yeah.
I just thought of a quick question, sorry. Um, all the comparisons between like our district and state, do we ever compare to our DARTs? Or anything that's a little bit more refined?
Oh, like a, like a, a, a town that's similar to ours?
Yeah, just something that's not so big as a state. I'm not asking for additional work. I'm just wondering if that's something that's ever been.
That is part of how the DART is also.
Right.
Um, established as well. It's one aspect of it, but that's a good point. That's a good question.
I mean, cause like I hear the takeaway, I think that you were kind of speaking to, right? Is that all the concerns over maybe comparing our schedule in twenty twenty-one to other town schedules and stuff like that, where are we gonna fall behind? We're seeing at the state level that that's not represented in the data, but, um, we're just kind of curious on a, on a different level.
Like town to town?
Right.
Yeah, maybe not like one-to-one, but like a subgroup or something, but I didn't know if they also churned that out at a helpful level, but clearly not.
No, we can get it. It can, it's on there. It's on the, a DSE website. Um, but all of this, I, was mostly from Edwin Analytics.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Our next agenda item is our joint meeting with the Town Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, of which we have some in person and some online. So if you'll give me a moment to pull in your fellow committee members, Anita.
I was getting all excited because our numbers were growing.
Yeah, it's for this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
Exciting.
I know it is, but I was like, wow, we're getting attendance.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, we'll see if those folks pop in as panelists.
They should be.
Excited to know that we have some members joining virtually because I thought it was just gonna be me and my.
Oh, you were sitting, because you had no idea. I knew that you did.
The song was gonna be like The Cheese Stands Alone.
Oh, my gosh. What a throwback, Anita.
Hey, Scott.
Please, okay.
It's Catherine.
Let's see if, did everyone? I'm trying to promote them. I think they're, I think they're resisting joining us.
We have to accept.
You guys need to join, please.
You have to accept. I don't even know if you do.
Yeah, it says like this person wants, host wants to.
Yeah, I guess so. Well, there were two more that aren't coming through, so.
Well, if there are two members of the DEI committee would like to come through, you're very welcome to. But if not, that's okay. Thanks for being here for support.
And could leave their video off, right?
Yeah, you could.
Thank you for saying that, yeah.
If they want to be panelists, promoted panelists to be able to speak or raise hands later, but leave their video off because of whatever reasons. Always helpful.
Yeah. Okay.
Great. Welcome, Pat Raffucci. Should I just jump in?
Thank you.
Great, um.
I'll get started.
Okay, so my name is Anita Tonakar Nguyen. I'm the Select Board Liaison to the DEI Committee. Thank you so much for having us. Um, I've been very happy to have served on the DEI Committee with Ming Chen since its inception. And now I'm very happy to be, um, growing a partnership with Marisol and the committee. Um, so I'm currently the chair, um, as of like last month, so I'm gonna be holding the spot for a little bit. And so this meeting is very long overdue. I'm pretty sure this is the first time the DEI Committee has come before the school committee. So we're really happy and excited to be here. I know a lot of other people had other commitments, which is why it's a smaller group today, but, um, we're still happy here to be here nonetheless. So there, I did pull together a few slides and I'm not sure if you want me to go through them, but I'll, it's very high level. I basically wanted to provide sort of like a level set for the people who might not be aware of the DEI Committee and what we do or what we've been doing and who we are. So, um, the next slide really is the charge to the committee. It's, the DEI Committee, um, is here to serve as an advisory committee to the town of Westford as a whole. Our duties are to provide advice and recommendations to the Select Board and School Committee. Um, will identify needs around fostering acceptance and valuing diversity, discourage prejudice and discrimination. And we're gonna be reviewing town and school policies and procedures and make recommendations to ensure that they advance equity and diversity, specifically where the committee has identified deficiencies. And I think the biggest takeaway that I wanted to pull from this slide, which I know is very apparent on the committee's side, is that there has been an imbalance in terms of engagement with the Select Board versus the School Committee. And I think having this first meeting here, um, really is, could help, um, uh, minimize that imbalance and, um, right that ship a little bit. And although this is our first time here, it will not be our last. So we're gonna elbow our way into your agenda more often. So on the next slide, you'll see examples of past activities. I'm not going to, um, go through all of them, but I did wanna highlight the second line item, which is the survey to families of WPS students. Thank you to Dr. Chu. We like wrangled him as soon as he was, um, secured this position. And also to the leadership team members who provided input into that survey. And thank you to Valerie, who I think participated in almost all of the subcommittee meetings for this, which was almost on a weekly basis.
There was a lot.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your quality control and help with the process to, to help, um, us get that out. And there was a meeting, I don't even know how long ago it was at this point, that reviewed that survey data. And I feel like there's an opportunity to do more with this if we wanted to do that. But on the next slide, you'll see a list of some of our current activities and a lot of it might not be a big surprise. So we're provide, we provide general input when approached by town committees or staff. Um, we're reviewing some hiring policies. We're partnering with a WPS DEI team. And something that I did wanna call out specifically on here is the last line item, which is an upcoming proposal to the Select Board. So Joe Diamond, who's one of our vice chairs, is gonna be attending the Select Board meeting on November fifteenth. And that's to provide some background to a proclamation that the DEI Committee is gonna be drafting and hoping that the Select Board will review and approve. And that's to recognize January as Holocaust Education Month in Westford, recognize January twenty-seventh as Holocaust Remembrance Day, and adopt a working definition of antisemitism. Joe's really led, um, a lot of research in this area. There's an antisemitism initiative that he's hoping that we could adopt here in town. So our real ask to the school committees on this last slide here, the first two line, um, items on that slide are really sort of ongoing, which is continued engagement and meeting attendance between the DEI Committee and the WPS DEI Team. Thank you to Dr. Chu for, um, welcoming a couple of our committee members to attend your staff meetings. Um, I think it'll be really great with helping to bridge that gap of where the work is that you're, you're doing here within the school community that we can then extend out into the community. I think the biggest thing is that we don't want to, um, create redundancy. We don't wanna overlap on things. We just wanna help build those bridges. And the second piece here is cross-share learnings and policies between schools and towns. So I know that there's a lot of differences between the town and the school side. You really have to, um, tailor things to the school community, obviously, and we'll do the same on the town side. But if there's an opportunity to share a learning or a policy, then we should be, especially if it has to go through legal, then why, you know, we should be able to share that. And then you're starting from here as opposed to starting from scratch. Let's minimize and prevent redundancy. Let's build upon the work that we're doing independently and kind of become more in sync if we can. And finally, the last item here, which is in bold, is our real immediate, um, short-term ask and why we asked to be on your agenda today. And that is that the school, I mean, the DEI Committee is looking to create or identify one or two priorities for the upcoming year. And we all know that the DEI landscape is vast. There are eight million things to tackle and we can't do all of it, right? And while, um, the DEI Committee would like to have that focus of one or two priorities for the next year, we absolutely understand and know that, that issues are gonna arise and kind of ebb and flow. But we still need to make sure that we're focused on those one or two things to complete by the end of the year. So we, we have milestones and benchmarks to meet, right? And so we can build our portfolio as a town around DEI. So, um, we did approach the Select Board meeting a couple of my meetings ago. Again, my timeline is all fogged up. Um, and so we did understand, you know, kind of what their, their priorities are. And it's around hiring, retention, how do we, um, create a welcoming environment? So people of different populations feel welcome to participate and volunteer in our committees, for example. Or also, um, more about the hiring policies and, um, exit interview questions. So I'm gonna pause there, um, because I think most of the time it's really for discussion and to hear from you, but I also welcome any questions.
Thank you. That's perfect. Um, and we'll pick it up from there then. I mean, you've sort of laid the table of what you're looking for, what work the committee is already eyeing for this year, and then we can kind of talk about what's happening. You know, what the committee feels are priorities, but also what at the district level and at the WPS DEI Team, what sorts of things are priorities? And I'm just gonna start off, you talked about hiring, and I know we've done some work in the past year on that. And I know I've talked to you and there was the conversation of how do we share, are there things that can be shared from the school side to the town side and vice versa?
Right. I think that's, that's great. And it's actually a great time to begin those discussions. We had a presenter come in to do an overview about hiring practices and kind of developing an infrastructure that lends itself versus, well, avoiding tokenism, right? And, and how do you build that into your culture? So Lawrence Alexander is actually going to be coming to kind of be the expert on hand. Um, we're gonna establish a committee to adjust and refine our hiring practices, our job descriptions, our kind of digital footprint. How do we welcome people in? And so we haven't, we haven't met as a committee yet. It was just kind of the introduction and people were quite fascinated by the presentation. So I do think that we can certainly join efforts in that regard.
That would be great.
And, and his presentation with us was with all of our full leadership team, so all of the hiring managers, right? The principals, assistant principals, curriculum coordinators.
Forty of us.
Central office. And so, and the takeaway, he, he, he did do an excellent job. And the takeaway, so many people were like, wow, there were, there were things that were impacting them immediately, right? Um, which I thought was, and it was interesting that when Carrie, um, when Carrie had reached out to him, we were, we anticipated, oh, well, maybe we can schedule something in the spring when hiring season typically begins. And he was the first one who was like, no, 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 no. You don't wanna do this work during the hire. You, you, we need to start the conversation now to, to prepare for that, which I thought was super helpful.
Thanks. Can I, can I ask a question? Cause we're talking about retention as well. And so in terms of, um, just our internal policies, and I don't know the answer to this, so I'm asking, doing the lawyer thing. That's the opposite of lawyer thing, which is asking a question I don't know the answer to. But what is the, um, is there, do you folks feel like they have a clear sense of who they would report an instance of like discrimination or, um, racism in, in their employment? So be it if they're a, a town employee or whether they're a school employee, like, do you folks feel like they have like clear channels to, to do that? Because if we wanna retain our staff that we've worked so hard to recruit, then how, that's something that I think is really important. And is there an alternative in case the person is your supervisor?
That's a really great question, and I don't know the complete answer to that, but there is something that we're working on that's not specific to town staff though. So maybe this isn't gonna answer your question. But one of the activities that we're working on is to partner closer with the Westford Police Department so that if there are people in the community who feel like they've, um, felt, uh, dealt with harassment or hate crime or something like that, that they would know how to approach the police department, where to go and what those resources are. And so it's, so that the DEI Committee, and this is my personal opinion, and I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody else right now, but just that the DEI Committee is not seen as the watchdog of the police. But it's also understood that the police department is working with us to know that they are a resource for people in our community. And how do we build that education? How do we build and, um, refine or whatever, the police department's website and their outreach strategies? So that people understand they have somewhere to go to. Cause I think what happens is that people in the community suffer within their communities or suffer within themselves and their families, and they don't know where to go. And so, um, that, I realize that doesn't answer your question, but that is a really good question that I feel like we, um, don't know the answer to, other than reporting to the town manager, which has been kind of like the go-to response or pathway right now.
On the school side, I mean, what's your sense?
Well, so, so we have, we have been addressing just how anyone, students, parents and staff can report, if they feel like there has been, they've been discriminated against or they've witnessed it in any way. I think we need to consistently be making sure that that is clear as to where that initial reporting aspect exists, right? The forms that can exist. And we have an infrastructure in place from the, at the building level all the way up through central office.
There's a form you can fill out?
Yeah.
And our, our staff have mandated training every year. And part of that training is reporting and shows who the civil rights coordinator is, so who the go-to people are, so that.
How many forms do they fill out every year? Is it five? Is it a hundred? Is it five hundred?
Not a hundred.
No, I mean, I would say, well, it depends like whether it's, whether, whether we're talking students filling out the forms versus staff filling out the forms. I mean, I would say the numbers are still relatively low. I couldn't speak. At the building level, the principals and the, the school-based administration first gets the forms that are filled out at the school level. I would say it's, it's. I mean, it's.
I mean, including staff, zero to.
Right.
Ten, five? It's low.
Yeah.
Can you remind me? It's not anonymous, right?
No, it's not.
Right, it takes the reporter's.
And there, we had them posted at the schools with a QR code. Is that still, is that sort of a permanent?
Yeah, they're all over the place.
They're in the bathroom, guidance office.
Yeah, middle school and the academy, they're in the bathrooms. At the elementary schools, they're in the offices and they're in other places. They're in the library. They just. They're in the library. They just didn't necessarily put them in the.
So it sounds like they're visible, they're, you two immediately recognized, yeah, that they're posted and everything.
And it is, and the form itself is just, we made it clear when we were developing it with the DEI team that it's, it's, if any discrimination, if you've witnessed it or you, or you have experienced it, so it's clear that it's, you can be reporting it, that it doesn't have to be a student. It doesn't have to be, so it's, it's not like, oh, this is just for students, this is just for staff. It's, it's universal.
That might be a great opportunity for collaboration to be able to share with, you know, the town, town DEI committee, what that form looks like, what that QR code looks, looks like, how, what it, where it directs people for the form.
Yeah.
And certainly, like, I think it's one of the things that we toyed, toyed with when the QR code was, was brought up last year, too, was that, like, we get, we quite often get these reports, like Principal Antonelli will come in and we'll do an end-of-the-year report as to like vaping and, you know, here's how many incidents we had. And here's what kind of the trends were, where they were in the building, things like that. Like, from, from a, a leadership perspective, I think it would be helpful for us if we could have like a debrief at the end of the year as to, here's what our incident, here's what the incidents were. You know, being mindful of student privacy, things like that, particularly if, if there's few incidents. But, so we, from a leadership standpoint, can look at it and say, hey, what are we doing right? What are we doing wrong, right? And certainly, like, I think that that would be a great area for collaboration when we put together something like that. Because it's not limited to the schools, right? It's just that there are schools, you know, we have a little more control as to what's going on in those buildings.
I think you're right for transparency and just for, again, for, for data of how we, how our health is as a district. That would be really useful.
I think the hard part, the hard part that I've experienced when working with data is that when you don't have data, it's hard to figure out why there's no data. So if no one is reporting, then is there no racism? Or is there a process that's seen as ineffective?
That's a good point.
And, and we did just roll out these forms. So we need to consistently be reflective anyway, but also finding out, okay, wait a second. We went through a lot of different iterations of it and got feedback as to what would be accessible, what would, what do, what do we think people would be comfortable reporting and, and filling out? But you're right, if there's no data, then we then ask the question, why is that? Now, that being said, the other piece of it is that we also have those forms for when somebody has witnessed something, right? Which is also another piece of it where that is something that I would hope that we would be creating an atmosphere where people would be more comfortable sharing information if they, if they believe that some, some change will take place.
And then beyond the forms, that's if somebody wants to report in that manner. But there are other times where there's a, a situation between two students and they, they share with a staff member who then, you know, you don't have to only report via the form, of course, if staff members are involved. So dealing with, you know, anywhere from four to eighteen, nineteen-year-olds, twenty-two-year-olds, we, there are circumstances where it's more organic than this formal report with the form.
Catherine, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious, I've actually just pulled out, there's possibly a place here to use Panorama, you know, when we're talking about the data and, or maybe lack thereof. I suppose the one thing with the Panorama data is we potentially have the tool to kind of maybe dive into students and staff thoughts on using the, the form that we've created and, and their feelings around it. So I'm just kind of more throwing it out there that maybe it's something we could look at using at, maybe in the spring or something with adding in a question just to kind of see if we can get a sense of feelings and thoughts on if it's, if it's welcomed or being used, you know, or, or, you know, essentially just take the temperature on what people think.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. We didn't ask that specific question. And you're right, we could. Because you're right, we talked about, the, the Panorama data helped us to get a sense as to the conversations and the work that's being done and how people feel. But that isn't, that wasn't asked specifically, you're right, yep.
Magna?
Um, I think, to be honest, I knew about it because we talked about it. And I'm not sure however many knew about it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I just saw it in like, it's not in all of the bathrooms, but in the lunchroom bathroom, you can like clearly see it whenever you're in the bathroom. But I'm not sure if many people are using it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I don't think many people know about it is probably one thing. So that is probably somewhere where we could work on that. But the second thing is that I think a lot of, I'm not talking about situations where someone sees something, because I think that's a different issue altogether that maybe they're scared to report. But when someone themselves has faced something, most times than not, I'm pretty sure, I think personally, I wouldn't fill out a form if I can just go see my dean. Or if I can just go email them and say, let's just meet. Because to me, that's the same thing as filling out the form.
And, and that kind of is the point, even the idea of creating it was not to add a level of bureaucracy and/or paperwork for somebody to fill out. It was to provide additional opportunities for people to then connect and to, to say something. So you're right, we want to make sure that we're communicating that effectively.
Yeah.
Thanks for that. Bringing it back to our collaboration with the town DEI, are there other things that come to mind where there are some opportunities? And, and I think in general, while we can have that discussion here, I'm really hopeful about the cross-pollination of the committees of, of having folks from the town DEI coming to our team meetings. I don't know what, how that's gone, or I, I, we probably hasn't, haven't had a lot where we've, yet where we've had those. But I think there's a lot of that more constant communication and of course, our liaisons to town DEI.
Policy Subcommittee would, would be another group that we would certainly love to liaise with you. I mean, we've looked at our hiring policy in the past and had, had looked at some revisions to it and had looked at some policies in other school districts in Massachusetts that may have specifically memorialized in policy how to, the, how to prioritize the importance of diversity in hiring. And, and we've talked about that. Some of those efforts kind of got put, put on hold for, for other, other, other issues and COVID and, and whatnot. But we would love to circle back to, to that policy and of course, you know, coordinate with, with leadership. And, but if the town is also looking at memorializing that in hiring policies, being able to do that in alignment with town and schools, I think makes it more powerful.
Yeah, especially with, you know, our town manager, Jody Ross, is retiring. So kind of thinking about what those policies, hiring, retention, workplace culture for our staff, what that's going to look like after January. It seems like this is all really good timing to kind of get on the same page about that.
I don't, I don't know sort of what the action is, but I guess I'm reflecting personally as well that maybe we just also could find a way to review the survey takeaways, right? I mean, there was two pages of suggestions, two slides of suggestions that there might be some that sort of have become, like, in the suggestions, in the points that you guys have raised of, of things that are ongoing or happening. But I'm just reflecting on, like, there is sort of a body of suggestions that we could pull from and start to reflect as a school committee first, whether we're acting on any of those and whether we can do better.
And also as, as a district, at the district DEI team as well. I don't, I don't remember how much that happened in the spring, but I'd feel like that team would want to look at, look at those, too. So we can think about what makes sense to happen there versus what makes sense to happen here.
And I think, I mean, right now, our, many of the conversations are focusing on our strategic plan, right? And so as we're talking about priorities over the next couple of years, then the idea of when we're looking at the different priorities that we have, what action items on a district level, if not at the school level, because they're two different things, that can be directly connected and in partnership with the town DEI committee, right? Whether it's articulated specifically that way or whether we're just using the same language about a given priority, I think is something that we're, that it's, this is a perfect time to be doing that, which I think is great.
Sounds like a lot of great timing for us to be getting together.
Right?
So for like specific next steps, though, what should that look like? Or.
We talked about hiring.
I was going to say, I'll be in touch with you to, to share about our process and see how we can merge in some way.
That would be great.
Yep, so you'll hear from me.
And I'll take the, this information, I took, scribbled down some notes and I'll bring that back to the DEI committee to let them know what we heard from you today. And I'm just going to see if Scott or Pat had anything that you wanted to say before we close out.
I think that there, we, when you talk about the statistics of the, that questionnaire, that's not going to be enough. It's going to have to be. We need some data on how much, how many incidents and what kind of incidents are occurring at the district level. I don't care if it's at the school level, but I think we need to know what's going on in the schools. And right now, there's no transparency for that, for, as far as I, I see. The kind of issues that you're talking about that may, a teacher or, or administrator may confront, are those recorded? Are those, are those part of a database? Or are you, are you keeping track of them? Are you watching trends? What's going on with that? And I think we need to know that.
I think that's to Sean's point earlier as well, too. When you were talking about the reporting, reporting out different things that are taking place.
Yeah. And I think to Scott's point, looking at it like we talked about already, but just reminding that not everything is going to come through the questionnaire.
Right.
Things are going to get reported in any number of ways. And having some centralized way of tracking that, that every, and then, and you have to find a way to also disposition those things, right? Like some things percolate and then it turns out it's a miss, you know, it's just not true or things get actioned, I don't, and we have to think about what you can share out. But having sort of that centralized, you know, as, as Scott said, like a database where really anything at least gets put in there. Again, not everything's going to get brought out here because it can't, but just so that it's all in one place. And, and no matter what level it rises to, it's, it's going to get put in some, some repository of information. I think that would be helpful. And then you could talk about numbers, you know, we had this many incidents reported, you know, here, how they got dispositioned. Catherine, I see your hand up.
I just want to circle back on Anita was asking about, you know, kind of more specifics. I think one of the biggest takeaways we all came away with, or I hope we all came away with after last January and the basketball at the high school was our communication. And, you know, it was definitely something on the community side that we heard a lot of people sharing with us that they struggled with kind of the communication aspect of it. And I'm just wondering, is, is this a, a good kind of partnership to partner with the town DEI in looking at ways specifically for kind of community outreach and community communication regarding, not just specific issues or things that go on in specifically in the school, but just in the wider context? And, you know, helping our community members? And I mean, bearing in mind, these community members are not, their parents, their grandparents, their, you know, substitute teachers, they're in our stores, they're tutors. I mean, you know, we're interacting with them. They're not separate to the schools. But to kind of also plug in and kind of engage in the equity work that, you know, we are going to be hopefully really doing and really embedding and, and figuring out ways to engage with the wider community on that. Because I think my biggest takeaway is, is, you know, if we're really going to do this in Westford, it has to be not just central to the schools. But I think it makes sense that the schools in town have the same messaging and are kind of same, are similarly focused on what they want to communicate with the various subgroups within the community.
So I know that, I mean, one of the DEI team meetings that I attended last year, the year before or something, there was a group of teachers or staff who are going to prepare sort, like, whenever there was some sort of issue, national issue or something that would be impactful to our students, that they would create some sort of messaging or an email or something that would go out to, to teachers, if, if that's still in place. So the DEI committee has a couple of members on our, on our committee who basically are sort of doing the similar thing, where they're creating statements or they're coming together to make sure that there's sort of a resource for the community members. And so maybe it's linking those two up, Catherine, to make sure we're sharing what the other, other group is saying, we're resources for each other and we're, we're saying the same thing or related, if they're not exactly the same, since it's different audiences. But there's another connection point.
Who are those members?
Could I just share as well, Chris, once with the committee? I'm sorry, I can't see if somebody put their hand up.
Yeah, can I, can I just ask?
I just pulled it up in relation to, you know, we were talking about the data. The, the closest question we have on Panorama that says, how well does your school help students speak out against racism? And we have a favorable rating of thirty-seven percent. So thirty-seven percent of our students felt they were extreme, you know, we did it extremely well or quite well. I think that's quite relatable in terms of that Title IX, the, the form and stuff that we've been talking about. So, you know, I, I just think it's something to think about.
Well, happy to work through Marisol and Catherine.
Yes.
To get information back to this committee or come back again anytime that you would like for us to report back.
And I, the other thought that occurred to me is if, as we look at some of this Holocaust recognition in January, if there's an opportunity to do any collaborative work with the schools and maybe it's an educational piece to that in one or more of the schools, that would be really interesting, I think, as well.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm sure some of that would be happening anyway in the schools, I can imagine. But just to kind of close the loop on that. Brune?
I just have a question that's a little unrelated to the townwide, but for the school-wide level. So I know there's that civil rights complaint form. Is there some way for students to access that, like, outside of school? Because I know, like, in all guidance counselor's emails, in the signature, there's like, if you need mental health help, there's all that information. Is there any way for students to kind of access that form outside of school?
It is on all the school websites as well, too. But there isn't anything as specific as like the signature of a counselor's, you know, of the counselor's signature that would direct them. But, but they are all, they're available on all of the school websites.
That's a really nice thought, though, Brune.
Yeah.
To say, to have a statement that says, like, Westford Public Schools is committed to diversity, equity, inclusion, and here's your form.
Great. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for having us. Sorry, Jeff Goodwin, who has to listen after me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anita.
I think I'm just leaving right now.
I'll be there soon.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Our next agenda item is the district facilities study update. Are we expecting Jeff online?
I don't know if he's going to be able to join us. If he, you can check and see if he's online. If not, then we can provide the update.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. So we, so we had our kickoff meeting with SMMA. And you were with us as well, which is helpful. So jump in and we can tag-team this together. We talked about just the, again, we went through what we had already put in our RFQ in the first place about what the purpose of the feasibility study was. And we talked about the process here on out. And so representatives from SMMA are going to be visiting all of the schools. They're going to be meeting with all of the principals. They're going to be looking at the, all of the, the floor plans of all of the schools as well as touring the facilities, looking at it through both an educational programming lens as well as an engineering facilities lens as well, too. And then after visiting the schools, one of the things that they're, they're also going to be looking at are, are enrollment projections and looking at all of the demographics that we have here in town, looking at the previous work that we did on redistricting, previous work that we've done in terms of looking at the grade level. previous work that we've done in terms of looking at the grade level configurations of each of the buildings. And then later, they're, they're on track to have the draft report prepared in March and then the final report in May. They think that that, that timeline is still, is still very realistic, which I think is great. We talked about having, after they've collected the first round of data and specifically looked at the space utilization of our buildings, one of the things they're going to look at is they're going to look at all of our floor plans, the way we're using the spaces now and look at them with the current S, the current MSBA guidelines. So the Massachusetts School Building Authority has very specific guidelines as to what classroom spaces should be, the size, the usage, what should be involved in it. Those evolve over time. And so they may be different than even when we built some of our more recent buildings. So one of the things they do is they look at it, they take all of the floor plans and they will color code it as to whether or not it is, if we want to go back to, back to MCAS, whether it is not meeting the MSBA guidelines, whether it is meeting the MSBA guidelines, or whether it exceeds the MSBA guidelines. And after looking at that, we're going to have some significant information as to just how we're even, how we are utilizing the space and how the spaces can be utilized at this moment in time. After that, then they're going to have a more targeted view as to, okay, should we be looking at very specific buildings versus other buildings for needs? Ultimately, this, this report of theirs is going to have a ten year capital plan, right? That's one of the things that Jeff Goodman had mentioned when he presented the capital plan most recently. That's part of this. But some of those things for future years might be things that they look at in terms of roofs, in terms of things that we, that we would know anyway. The more, the, the more critical things that they're going to look at will then become our priority. And at that time, what we talked about is hosting a, hosting a meeting with like the, the PTO, the, the WPTO, the Westford Elementary PTO, and we talked with the president recently about that, whether we would have a separate meeting. At first I thought, oh, we could ask S M M A to present some of their initial thoughts and get feedback at one of their meetings. And then in that conversation, we just figured that actually doing it as a standard meeting, it would make more sense to have a separate meeting that is specifically designed for that. So that, we imagine will be taking place in January or February. And where we'll be getting more feedback from parents, that's where they might have very targeted questions, whether it's about transitions, whether it's about impressions on grade level configurations, things like that. But that's kind of the update at this moment in time. Is there anything else, either Carrie or Chris, that you can think of that I missed from that conversation?
No, I think that's, that hits all the main points.
Yeah. And they're going to be talking with teachers and students at the buildings as well too, when they visit the buildings as well.
In terms of that feedback and outreach, I think it would be really important to talk to CPAC.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep. That is a part of the, the process as well too. I don't know if it would be a separate meeting outside of the, the original thought about the WPTO, but we can make sure that that takes place. It's actually, honestly, it's, it's one of the things that comes up in conversations is that when, when you are looking at building design, the first things you look at are the, the, the specific needs that we have for supporting our special education programs. That's actually the first thing that is, is, is a part of it, but it would also be great to communicate that.
Yep. Any other questions on that? Thanks for the update.
Yep.
What does that bring us to? Hold on. Yeah, I don't usually, we don't usually vote on personnel updates, but I'd like us to take a vote to not accept this personnel update. We're gonna reject, we're gonna reject this personnel update and then that means it just doesn't happen.
Yep, so you can see that, and numbers wise, we're kind of leveling off a bit with our, with our hiring. But there's no doubt there is one name to this committee especially that's glaring, and that is Nina, who is retiring as of April 1st. I know she has spent many tireless nights here with us at school committee and her hours put into that. So she will be missed dearly. So I'm sure she's counting down how many, I know she loves.
I will say, I also know how difficult.
How many more late nights.
I, I know how difficult the decision was for her too as well too, because we, we had talked about that. So we, we absolutely, one hundred percent appreciate everything that you've been doing. Thank you.
The ti, I, I noticed that the timing of April 1st, she's, she's committed to helping us get through the budget, right?
That was exactly it.
Or it's just a big April Fool's joke.
It was a joke.
Yeah.
Yes, it's just a joke, right? This is an elaborate ruse. I'm going with that theory.
Well, we're gonna relish the next five months, so.
Thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review executive session minutes dated September 28th, 2022 and October 25th, 2022, and discuss strategy with respect to units A, C, and AFS CME collective bargaining. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. The committee will not return to public session.
Do I have a second? Good night.
Have a second, the motion.
You have a second. Okay, all in favor of adjourning to executive session? Gloria, roll call vote.
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Valerie?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Marisol?
Aye.
We are adjourned.